Commissioner Williams?
President.
Board Chair Coleman.
Present.
You have eight in the affirmative.
Thank you. The January Evaluation Committee meeting. The board held a special call meeting on December seventeenth. I'm sorry. The board held a special call meeting on December seventeenth to discuss terminating Superintendent Fagan's contract. And a resolution to terminate, a resolution for termination was presented. During the meeting Superintendent Fagan asked if an opportunity would be provided for her to make a comment in writing regarding the resolution. The board agreed to allow Superintendent Fagan to submit a written response to the resolution and voted to refer the matter back to an ad hoc committee on January the fourteenth to receive the written response. However, through her attorney Superintendent Fagan's agreed to provide the board with her written response to the resolution by January the sixth. The written response was received by the media on January the sixth and subsequently provided to the board through respective legal councils later that same day. The purpose of this meeting is to carry out the action taken by the board during the special call meeting to allow an opportunity for the superintendent to submit a written response. I want to make it clear that since this is a committee meeting, we will not be voting. Finally, to ensure that this is a productive meeting, we ask everyone to conduct themselves appropriately in a respective matter. Disruptive behaviors will not be tolerated. Two point oh one, discussion items, two point oh one Superintendent's written response to the resolution terminating employment contract. We have received Dr. Fagan's written response and will post it online and on board docs. Two, three point oh one next steps for my board colleagues. Are there any questions?
Thank you Chair.
Hold on, let me, let me recognize you, okay. Board Member McKissick, I'm sorry, I was trying to see the lights.
No worries. Thank you so much Chair. I'm concerned, I appreciate the fact that we're going to post it online, but will there be any time for the superintendent to actually read it into the record as the resolution was read out loud?
Sure, we'll, we can allow you to read it. Okay, you have it, okay.
I just want, I was for clarification and we want to make sure we get it all right. Thank you.
We're going to work together, yes ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you Madam Chair. A point of personal privilege, thank you Dr. Harrington for your presence this evening. Thank you most importantly to my daddy. Thank you for your love and for being a model for how to treat people even when they mistreat you. I know that you're proud of your girl even in moments like these. But daddy, since these baseless claims that I prepared to address today weren't enough as you landed in Memphis to support me, it was brought to my attention that some have reached a newer low by orchestrating a damaging egregiously false allegation by a former team member. This is all that I know, but what I do know daddy is that is no coincidence that these untrue scandalous claims are surfacing now during a time where some board members desire to terminate my contract without pay. I learned of this matter through the media which reported that J.B. Smiley Jr. shared this tip with them. I also learned that board member Natalie McKinney daddy plans to bring up this horrible allegation allegation to nail my coffin closed. Shortly after I've been informed that the Carter Malone Group has shared an embargo statement to the news outlets to amplify this harmful statement, an unfounded allegation. The deliberate timing and coordination of these actions cannot be ignored, but to be clear, any suggestion of inappropriate conduct on my part is not only untrue but malicious. It's evident that this coordinated attack is designed to tarnish my reputation and undermine my standing in the Memphis community and the educational field. To anyone perpetuating these allegations, I will not tolerate such reckless behavior and I reserve every right to pursue full legal remedies against anyone involved in spreading or amplifying damaging falsehoods in my name and any coordinated effort to stain my good name. To the matter at hand, education is more than textbooks. It's the lifeblood of a city. It shapes who we are and who we can become. It's how businesses choose where to invest, families decide where to plant their roots, and communities find hope in making dreams come true. Strong schools build strong children and strong cities. When I accepted this role on February ninth, twenty twenty four, I did so with one goal, to make this district the engine of transformation for Memphis. I shared that the right leader at the right place, at the right time, changes everything knowing that transformation is both a privilege and a burden. I knew it would require hard work, a strong team, and a commitment to put students first always. But I also knew this, when you are committed to doing hard work, your leadership is inconvenient and comfort is never the companion of progress. I've learned a difficult truth over the past few months, that facts, transparency, and even integrity hold little weight and are overshadowed by noise. That truth came into sharp focus on December seventeenth, twenty twenty four when Board Chair Coleman called the city together to terminate my contract. I sat through hours of agonizing disrespect and defamatory attacks that cut deeply as a leader who's worked hard and tirelessly to rise through the ranks of leadership and as a black woman who knows all too well what it feels like to have your competence questioned, your intentions distorted, and your dignity dismissed. Despite Chair Coleman's claim that I failed to communicate critical information to the board, the facts paint a very different picture. More than three thousand six hundred and eighty-five minutes of my life equating to more than sixty-one hours of phone calls alone with board members, over seven hundred text messages, two hundred and fifty emails, twenty-one weekly newsletters, and more than forty in-person huddles, all in just six months from July to December of twenty twenty four. Every email, every meeting, every message was an effort to collaborate, build trust, and keep this district moving forward, and yet the truth was drowned out by false narratives designed to divide us. The most painful accusations weren't about emails or meetings, they were about my character, my integrity, my humanity. As a certified counselor in multiple states, I've spent years supporting those in crisis, including this morning as we mourned yet another loss of a student. On a Saturday morning in September early fall, I spent forty-five minutes on the phone with an employee who reached out directly to me with the subject line suicidal employee. Making such a disgusting insinuation was not just cruel, it was a betrayal of every person who looks to this district for support and hope. The challenges of leadership don't define you, how you respond does. And through all of this, I've remained professional, collaborative, and I've kept my eyes on the main thing, showing up every day to ensure students have access to the kind of education that opens doors, ignites dreams, and transforms lives, and to ensure that our principals, our teachers, and the leaders have the resources necessary to ensure the same. And as long as I have the privilege of serving this community, I will fight for that promise with everything I have, which is why I'm still here. The nine oh one deserves nothing less. A thorough review of the facts will demonstrate that I acted transparently, transparently within the scope of responsibilities of the superintendent and in alignment with relevant laws and policies as stated by the Tennessee Department of Education and the Office of the Comptroller. And while I do not expect fairness and impartiality from everyone in this room, my integrity and my commitment to this district demand that I do not allow facts to be drowned out by false accusations and political maneuvering. What troubles me though is that the truth might not even matter even after I lay out the facts against the claims against me. And yet, I will do just that. Claim one Superintendent misled the board and the public when she stated during a boardwork session that the district has paid employees one million dollars in overtime wages for time not worked. Superintendent never presented any evidence suggesting that her statement was true, and she did not correct or clarify her statement to the public. As further detail below, the superintendent's statements regarding overtime waste and abuse were accurate based on documented fiscal reports shared with the board and consistent with district policy. District policy two zero one eight fraud, abuse, and waste is clear that abuse includes behavior that is unreasonable and constitutes unnecessary business practices given the facts and circumstances, and waste is the careless or needless expenditure of district funds. Based on the superintendent's review of overtime records and expenses related to overtime for years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four, it was clear that prior approval for overtime was not being obtained regularly and there was a history of failure to properly record and document overtime, which clearly constitutes abuse and waste as defined by the same policy as well as policy four zero five nine overtime. This is further supported by the mere fact that overtime expenses have decreased by one million dollars from December twenty twenty-three through December twenty twenty-four since internal control measures and enhanced supervisory oversight were implemented under the superintendent.
...with her written response to the resolution by January the sixth. The written response was received by the media on January the sixth and subsequently provided to the board through respective legal councils later that same day. The purpose of this meeting is to carry out the action taken by the board during the special call meeting to allow an opportunity for the superintendent to submit a written response. I want to make it clear that since this is a committee meeting, we will not be voting. Finally, to ensure that this is a productive meeting, we ask everyone to conduct themselves appropriately in a respective matter. Disruptive behaviors will not be tolerated. Two point oh one, discussion items. Two point oh one, superintendent's written response to the resolution terminating employment contract. We have received Dr. Fagan's written response and will post it online and on board docs. Two, three point oh one, next steps for my board colleagues. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chair.
Hold on, let me recognize you, okay. Board Member McKissick, I'm sorry, I was trying to see the lights.
No worries, thank you so much, Chair. I'm concerned, I appreciate the fact that we're going to post it online, but will there be any time for the superintendent to actually read it into the record as the resolution was read out loud?
Sure, we can allow you to read it. Okay, you have it? Okay.
I just want, I was for clarification, and we want to make sure we get it all right. Thank you.
We're going to work together, yes ma'am.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. A point of personal privilege, thank you, Dr. Harrington, for your presence this evening. Thank you most importantly to my daddy. Thank you for your love and for being a model for how to treat people even when they mistreat you. I know that you're proud of your girl even in moments like these. But daddy, since these baseless claims that I prepared to address today weren't enough as you landed in Memphis to support me, it was brought to my attention that some have reached a newer low by orchestrating a damaging egregiously false allegation by a former team member. This is all that I know, but what I do know daddy is that it's no coincidence that these untrue scandalous claims are surfacing now during a time where some board members desire to terminate my contract without pay. I learned of this matter through the media, which reported that J.B. Smiley Jr. shared this tip with them. I also learned that Board Member Natalie McKinney, daddy, plans to bring up this horrible allegation to nail my coffin closed. Shortly after, I've been informed that the Carter Malone Group has shared an embargo statement to the news outlets to amplify this harmful statement, an unfounded allegation. The deliberate timing and coordination of these actions cannot be ignored, but to be clear, any suggestion of inappropriate conduct on my part is not only untrue but malicious. It's evident that this coordinated attack is designed to tarnish my reputation and undermine my standing in the Memphis community and the educational field. To anyone perpetuating these allegations, I will not tolerate such reckless behavior, and I reserve every right to pursue full legal remedies against anyone involved in spreading or amplifying damaging falsehoods in my name and any coordinated effort to stain my good name. To the matter at hand, education is more than textbooks. It's the lifeblood of a city. It shapes who we are and who we can become. It's how businesses choose where to invest, families decide where to plant their roots, and communities find hope in making dreams come true. Strong schools build strong children and strong cities. When I accepted this role on February ninth, 2024, I did so with one goal, to make this district the engine of transformation for Memphis. I shared that the right leader at the right place, at the right time, changes everything, knowing that transformation is both a privilege and a burden. I knew it would require hard work, a strong team, and a commitment to put students first always, but I also knew this, when you are committed to doing hard work, your leadership is inconvenient and comfort is never the companion of progress. I've learned a difficult truth over the past few months, that facts, transparency, and even integrity hold little weight and are overshadowed by noise. That truth came into sharp focus on December seventeenth, 2024, when Board Chair Coleman called the city together to terminate my contract. I sat through hours of agonizing disrespect and defamatory attacks that cut deeply as a leader who's worked hard and tirelessly to rise through the ranks of leadership and as a black woman who knows all too well what it feels like to have your competence questioned, your intentions distorted, and your dignity dismissed. Despite Chair Coleman's claim that I failed to communicate critical information to the board, the facts paint a very different picture. More than 3,685 minutes of my life, equating to more than 61 hours of phone calls alone with board members, over 700 text messages, 250 emails, 21 weekly newsletters, and more than 40 in-person huddles, all in just six months from July to December of 2024. Every email, every meeting, every message was an effort to collaborate, build trust, and keep this district moving forward, and yet, the truth was drowned out by false narratives designed to divide us. The most painful accusations weren't about emails or meetings, they were about my character, my integrity, my humanity. As a certified counselor in multiple states, I've spent years supporting those in crisis, including this morning, as we mourned yet another loss of a student. On a Saturday morning in September early fall, I spent 45 minutes on the phone with an employee who reached out directly to me with the subject line "suicidal employee." Making such a disgusting insinuation was not just cruel, it was a betrayal of every person who looks to this district for support and hope. The challenges of leadership don't define you, how you respond does. And through all of this, I've remained professional, collaborative, and I've kept my eyes on the main thing, showing up every day to ensure students have access to the kind of education that opens doors, ignites dreams, and transforms lives, and to ensure that our principals, our teachers, and the leaders have the resources necessary to ensure the same. And as long as I have the privilege of serving this community, I will fight for that promise with everything I have, which is why I'm still here. The 901 deserves nothing less. A thorough review of the facts will demonstrate that I acted transparently within the scope of responsibilities of the superintendent and in alignment with relevant laws and policies as stated by the Tennessee Department of Education and the Office of the Comptroller. And while I do not expect fairness and impartiality from everyone in this room, my integrity and my commitment to this district demand that I do not allow facts to be drowned out by false accusations and political maneuvering. What troubles me though is that the truth might not even matter even after I lay out the facts against the claims against me, and yet, I will do just that. Claim one, superintendent misled the board and the public when she stated during a board work session that the district had paid employees $1 million in overtime wages for time not worked. Superintendent never presented any evidence suggesting that her statement was true, and she did not correct or clarify her statement to the public. As further detail below, the superintendent's statements regarding overtime waste and abuse were accurate, based on documented fiscal reports shared with the board and consistent with district policy. District policy 2018 fraud, abuse, and waste is clear, that abuse includes behavior that is unreasonable and constitutes unnecessary business practices, given the facts and circumstances, and waste is the careless or needless expenditure of district funds. Based on the superintendent's review of overtime records and expenses related to overtime for years 2022, 2023, and 2024, it was clear that prior approval for overtime was not being obtained regularly, and there was a history of failure to properly record and document overtime, which clearly constitutes abuse and waste as defined by the same policy as well as policy 4059 overtime. This is further supported by the mere fact that overtime expenses have decreased by $1 million from December 2023 through December 2024, since internal control measures and enhanced supervisory oversight were implemented under the superintendent's leadership. Despite the board's unsupported claim, this is a clear indication of tangible results and improved fiscal responsibility and operational efficiency. A simple review of policy 2018 would have made it clear to the board that waste and abuse do not necessarily involve fraud. Nonetheless, the superintendent further explained what she meant by waste during the July 30th, 2024 business meeting. When I mentioned abuse, I was referring to inefficiencies and waste. Recognizing the opportunity to strengthen internal controls and processes, the superintendent asked the then-chief financial officer to develop a form for internal use to include the signature of the immediate supervisor, the CFO, and superintendent. Department leads communicated the internal process for overtime approved, aligned with the policy, and a policy edit was then recommended to the board and included in the superintendent's approval for overtime as a final measure. Other than one email from then-Board Chair Althea Green, the board demonstrated no interest in reviewing additional information when offered by the superintendent. Board Members Natalie McKinney, Tawana Murphy, and Sable Otey were not school board members at the time, and neither board member has inquired about overtime since their tenure beginning August 29th, 2024. Through the power provided by the board as Director of Schools, it is the responsibility of the superintendent to ensure that all district funds are managed with the utmost integrity and accountability, preventing waste and misuse while strategically aligning resources to achieve the district's educational goals and priorities. As stated above, from December 2023 to December 2024, overtime expenses are currently down by $1 million. Claim two, superintendent accepted a donation of more than $45,000 without board approval. At a board work session, superintendent misrepresented her knowledge of and investment in depositing the unapproved donation check in violation of board policy. First, the district's receipt and processing of $45,635.33 donation from School Seed Foundation did not violate board policy because it was presented to the board for acceptance promptly upon the superintendent's knowledge of the district's receipt of the same. Further, as confirmed by the Tennessee Comptroller's office, the donation was processed by the interim business financial officer in accordance with applicable Tennessee law and the responsibilities of the district's financial officer. Second, the board's claim of misrepresentation by the superintendent related to knowledge of and involvement in depositing the donation check is completely meritless. The board fails to provide a single fact to support it. The board has not and cannot demonstrate that the superintendent knew about the donation or that the superintendent was involved in receiving or depositing the donation check because the superintendent had no knowledge or involvement in the process. While the superintendent wears many hats, check processing is not one of them. As relevant here, district policy 2019, grants, gifts, donations, and sponsorship guides the receipt of donations for the district. Tennessee guides the district's receipt and management of funds. Board policy 2019 states $15,000 and above requires acceptance by the board. The policy does not require that a donation be brought to or accepted by the board within a specific timeframe. The policy does not require board acceptance before the funds are deposited. Rather, the policy speaks to providing notice of intended use if feasible prior to expending the funds. The funds were not spent. Tennessee law TCA 58207, Section A, requires funds to be deposited within three days after receipt. It states specifically, every county official handling public funds shall be required to maintain an official bank account in a bank or banks within this state and shall within three days after the receipt by such county official of any public funds, deposit the funds to the credit of such county official's official bank account or bank accounts. The superintendent learned of the donation on November 8th, 2024, through General Counsel Justin Bailey, when he informed the superintendent via phone call that, quote, "The board is asking something about a check from School Seed that they didn't approve," end quote. The superintendent asked Mr. Bailey for additional information, sharing with him that she did not have knowledge about his inquiry and that she was confident that he understood that the superintendent does not receive or process checks, a process that sits with finance. The superintendent, A, promptly presented the donation to the board on November 19th, 2024, for acceptance, quote, "for future Leadership Institute program expenditures," end quote. B, confirmed that the funds had not been used yet, and C, informed the board that the personnel responsible for processing the donation owned the responsibility of the oversight of not presenting the donation more promptly, although still complying with district policy. This was further shared with the board by the superintendent initially during the work session, again via email on November 21st, and again on December 4th, as stated on the record during the December 3rd, 2024 business meeting. The superintendent's actions related to the donation were consistent with the fiduciary responsibilities of the role, board policy, and Tennessee law. The board's claims of violation and misrepresentation of the same by the superintendent fall flat. Claim three, superintendent was dishonest with the board and the public when she stated that certain federal grant funds were still available to the district despite superintendent failing to obligate the funds prior to the required deadline. Ironically, this claim by the board is an intentional misrepresentation to the public. The board is undoubtedly aware that the funds in question were available at the time of their questioning. The funds were available as stated by the superintendent and have since been state-approved and allocated to the district. The American Rescue Plan Homeless Children and Youth Grant was first made available to state education agencies in 2021. State agencies then allocated a designated amount to all school districts known as LEAs across the state of Tennessee. After one year of the grants, any remaining funds are accessible for the district to spend down and then sent for approval by the superintendent on ePlan, which is the state's website, and then submitted for final approval of aligned activities to the Tennessee Department of Education, and in this case, it was homelessness. For local education agencies, any remaining funds available from the three-year grant had to be obligated through an executed contract or purchase order by the deadline of September 30th, 2024. The grant required an executed contract to be in place by September 30th, 2024, or use of the funds for other allowable activities related to homelessness without the need for a contract. Because there was no contract in place by September 30th, the funds were used for other allowable activities and approved by the Tennessee Department of Education. The board chose to rely on misinformation for which I've linked. Claim four.
Point of order, please. Thank you. I think what we agreed to was that you would give us a written response to the three allegations, and I think you've done that.
This is the written response.
To the three allegations, is that correct?
These are the allegations.
The claim four is not one.
These are allegations read into the record by the chair.
These were the allegations that were read in. I think what we said specifically was that it was going to be according to the resolution.
Yes, any allegation made against my name on the record deserves an opportunity for response.
And what we will do for that, Dr. Fagan, out of fairness and following what we decided to do on the 17th, we're going to post it.
It's posted.
Chair, point of order, Chair. No, 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 no.
Commissioner McKinney will finish, and then Commissioner McKissick. I have to hear the point first, and then you'll come.
Yeah, I think I made my point, again, that out of what we determined on the 17th is that we will receive, and I think you read it into the record today, unless I misheard it, that we would give the superintendent an opportunity to respond in a written format to the three allegations in the resolution. Is that correct?
Three, correct.
Thank you, just want to be clear.
Commissioner McKissick.
Thank you, Chair. To provide further clarification, it also happened on December 17th when those three allegations were read into the record. Board colleagues brought other items onto the agenda. We did not stick to the three items that were a part of the resolution, and those were read into the record, and I think it is only fair and just that the superintendent be given an opportunity to address those items that were also read into the record or spoken into the record that were beyond the resolution. And considering the gravity of the situation, I would think we would want to exhaust every opportunity for all parties to have their say. Thank you.
Commissioner Murphy.
Point of order, we just, well, she, Dr. Fagan's had already started on the fourth claim, so let her finish out her fourth claim, let this be done, and then we move on to the next.
Claim four, we continue to wait for a comprehensive strategic plan for the district and a full explanation of the district restructuring. The superintendent's failure to provide this plan has caused confusion among parents, staff, and the board. Although this claim was not included in the original resolution posted for the public, during the December 17th meeting, Chair Coleman read the additional claim to the public. Therefore, the superintendent will address it all the same. This claim is yet another misrepresentation to the public. Per policy 2001, annual operating budget, the board, in conjunction with the superintendent, shall establish priorities for the upcoming fiscal year by October. In alignment with policy, the strategic plan is informed by the priorities approved by the board once established. The strategic plan has been prioritized for discussion and placed on the agenda for every scheduled board retreat, July 19th through 20th, November 14th through the 15th, and our past one that was scheduled for last Friday and Saturday, subsequently canceled by the board with the exception of last Friday and Saturday due to weather. Dates for September were not selected as the board chose to singularly prioritize a mid-year evaluation for the superintendent. Therefore, the board's contention that, quote, "it continues to wait for the strategic plan" is not only false but disingenuous. At the request of Chair Coleman, the superintendent refrained from sharing the draft strategic plan with board members prior to these retreats, a request Chair Coleman also communicated in writing to her colleagues. Furthermore, the superintendent informed the board in September that the district continues to operate under multiple established plans from previous years, although not the desire for the district until a new strategic plan is finalized and approved. Restructuring plan, although many personnel changes began before the superintendent and the board had prior awareness of the sunsetting of ESAR funds impacting more than 1,000 employees, at approximately $73 million, the superintendent re-presented the district's draft budget and reorganization structure to the board and more than 13,000 online viewers on June 13th, 2024, explaining the support for each decision prior to budget approval. The organizational structure was also reviewed during individual huddles with board members in May. Additionally, the organizational structure was included in orientation binders and reviewed with new board members during orientation on September 5th as one of the many requested documents. Finally, the district's organization chart is posted on the website and updated monthly. This claim is also false. Claim five, communication with valued district partners. The resolution states in part, Dr. Fagan's refusal to communicate and/or cooperate with valued district partners. During the December 17th meeting, Chair Coleman publicly read aloud in pertinent part, "I have contacted elected officials at every level of government and longtime partners of the district, and they are in support of the action I'm recommending." First, Chair Coleman's statement that elected officials and longtime partners support her recommended action deserves careful examination, as it is contradicted by a vote of no confidence by the Shelby County Board of Commissioners, the multiple bills being considered by the state legislature for state control of Memphis Shelby County schools, and definitive statements by the Governor and Speaker of the House. Moreover, the reality on the ground paints a different picture. Current local, state, and national support and data directly from families, educators, and students overwhelmingly support the leadership of the superintendent and continuity in leadership. In an October survey conducted across the broader community, the straightforward question, "How's the superintendent doing so far?" yielded results from nearly 10,000 respondents, reflecting a positive perception about the superintendent. Median scores were consistently at the highest rating of five across all groups, reflecting strong approval among teachers, partners, community members, and students. Central office staff showed a slightly lower mean and median scores compared to other groups with a four and a 3.45 respectively. The strongest support comes from teachers and community partners. Furthermore, our longstanding partners have reaffirmed their commitment to collaborating with the current administration to achieve shared goals, underscoring the trust and alignment we've cultivated. Since September, the administration has successfully forged an additional 75 partnerships, expanding the district's network of support and resources. During the superintendent's brief tenure, more than 40 monthly quarterly huddles have taken place, engaging several groups to include both teacher associations, principal association, multilingual families, special education advisors, faith-based organizations, PTO, PTA, Pi, foster caregivers, realtors, business leaders, central office, VIP business leaders, higher education institutions, new teachers, VIP family and community groups, legacy builders, and numerous VIP tours, efforts that have served to strengthen relationships and foster trust with thousands of individuals across all neighborhoods in the 901, creating a unified community dedicated to advancing educational excellence. Quantitatively, the district has seen measurable gains under the current administration in five short months spanning July through December 2024. We've rehired 255 former Memphis Shelby County Schools teachers, increased student enrollment by 2.4% year-to-year, increased student attendance from 93% to 94% year-to-year, increased student reenrollments from 77.2% to 79.5%, increased dual enrollment from 2,886 to 2,966, increased district-wide enrollment by 944 students from August 19th to August 26th because of Hay Neighbor, and the rest goes, list goes on. These are not theoretical achievements, they are tangible, factual results rooted in collaborative efforts and steadfast leadership. It's important to recognize that progress requires collective alignment and accountability, not actions based on selective endorsements or incomplete narratives. A vote in favor of the resolution to terminate the superintendent's contract is a vote against these gains and the hard work invested by school and central office team members to achieve the same. Second, the superintendent has consistently communicated with and reported information and significant matters to the board and public. The board's claim of failing to promptly report critical information is completely false and dismisses the transparent communication protocols implemented and consistently practiced by the superintendent in alignment with and far exceeding district policy and the practices recommended by the Council of Great City Schools, which consists of the 78 largest urban districts across the country. While some members have refused to meet with the superintendent, the superintendent has again devoted more than 3,685 minutes to phone calls with nine board members from July 2024 through December 2024 alone, while effectively managing communication through multiple additional platforms and leading the largest district in the state. Through monthly meetings, more than 35 weekly board inside emails sent from April to December of 2024, select emails of which I've included there since being named to the position on February 9th, weekly huddles initiating February 19th, 2024, huddles in person range from 30 minutes to up to three hours when held with board members. You can see the dates and times for current board members as well as former board members. Phone calls and texts have included a log of select calls and messages just to give an idea of the time invested in effectively managing governance with the board. First 100 days, provided a 100-day booklet shared during my interview process as a candidate on December 15th, 2023, I reviewed that individually with each board member during the week of February 19th, 2024, and provided monthly updates and placed the same expectation from all senior leaders to follow suit. Provided a comprehensive transition report delivered to and shared with the board, typo there, excuse me, and the public on July 10th. A quarterly impact report, which is a comprehensive monitoring report implemented by the superintendent for transparency with the board and public regarding the impact of district partnerships and contracts. A district docs one pager shared with the board and the community for an easy way to access the same. Quarterly reports, the superintendent's quarter one report and quarter two report provides an overview of district improvements, needs, and accomplishments during semester one. This is a new effort implemented by the superintendent for transparency and to strengthen communication with the board and community. In closing, I want to be unequivocally clear, these claims are false, not because I say so, but because the facts make it indisputable and prove the inflammatory accusations are false. At the conclusion of the December 17th meeting, Board Chair Coleman stated, "We want to be fair." Yet, nothing about this process or my tenure has embodied fairness. The months leading to the December 17th, 2024 meeting, and now to this evening have been fundamentally flawed and carried out with a deep commitment by many current and former board members to publicly shame me, to create a hostile environment, and cause public distrust at every turn of my tenure, and to divide a district that is on the rise. Although I inherited what the previous interim leaders described as a mess, I've been expected to make a miracle in less time than is required to birth a healthy child. While I have made tough decisions, my actions have consistently been transparent, in good faith, aligned with district policies and priorities, and grounded in an unwavering focus on doing what is right for students, families, and staff. A yes vote to terminate my contract will not be grounded in the merit of these claims or any others. It will signify that this is and always has been about something else. To the board members who see through this and are prepared to vote against termination, I thank you for your dedication to integrity and to the progress we are making as a district. To those who remain undecided, I ask for what you are asking for from the community, and what I ask for every leader to provide for our students. and what I ask for every leader to provide for our students. A fair shot. In, in a society increasingly demanding immediate results, I also ask for time. Time to deepen relationships, time to effectively address stubborn systemic issues that have existed for decades, time to allow the improvements made to continue taking root and bearing fruit, and time respectfully provided to me through my contract. When I stepped into this role, I was ready to do whatever it takes to elevate the excellence of Memphis Shelby County Schools with a Board committed to transformative improvement, a Board that believed in the potential of our community and the promise of its children. You called on a leader ready to meet this challenge, and I have worked tirelessly with the district community to do the hard, necessary work of delivering on the promise of a better future for every student, and I remain focused on continuing the good work together. If this is about doing what is right, I urge the Board to resist the distractions of short-term politics and personal agendas and lean into the voices of the broader community we represent as your vote is bigger than me. It is about families who deserve to believe in the promise of better opportunities. It's about the city we will leave behind for the next generation. If the decision is otherwise, I am grateful for the thousands of supporters locally and nationally who have sent encouragement, prayers, and flowers, for my legacy builders, and many of our students who have shared encouragement and advice for when you are getting bullied, and for the nine oh one who unified across social class, political affiliation, and neighborhood to stand tall for education. I am at peace knowing that I was the right leader, at the right place, at the right time, and that changed everything. Madam Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. All matters related to the termination resolution will be discussed at our next meeting. If anybody, no more questions at this time. With no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Commissioner McKissick.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia.
Present.
Commissioner Porter.
Present.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Love.
Present.
Commissioner McKinney.
Present.
Commissioner Otte.
Present.
Commissioner Williams.
Present.
Board Chair Coleman.
Present.
You have nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, we do have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and for a moment of silence. In our moment of silence, let's remember a young student from Raleigh-Egypt High School, Cornelius Perry, who passed away after collapsing after school on yesterday. Our deepest condolences go out to the student's family, friends, and loved ones during this incredibly difficult time. Thank you, may be seated. We are now on to the spotlight on the arts. This month's spotlight is on twenty twenty-four Country Music Association Foundation Music Teachers of Excellence Award recipients and the Holiday Card Contest winners. The twenty twenty-four Country Music Association Foundation Music Teachers of Excellence Award, we would like to recognize the following teachers as twenty twenty-four Country Music Association Foundation Music Teachers of Excellence Award recipients. When I call your name, please come to the front. Alan Moody, off music teacher at Idewell Elementary, and his principal, Ms. Snack. Lindsay Mullins, off mu- off music teacher at Snowden School and her principal, Ms. Scruggs. Are they in here? Mr. Ollie Liddell, band director at Cent- at Central High School and his principal, Ms. Amy Epps. Mr. Moody, Ms. Mullins, Mr. Lindy, Liddell, I'm sorry.
Chair, if I may. While we're waiting for them to come into this room, may I speak about the awards and the recipients?
Yes.
I'd like to speak to Mr. Moody at Idewell Elementary and the principal of Idewell, Ms. Schnackey. Just have had the pleasure of attending numerous events there at the school, and I'm very proud and honored to represent Idewell. And even though Snowden's no longer in my district, I no longer represent Snowden, just really proud of Ms. Mullins and of course, Principal Scruggs for all the work that they do and for everyone involved. But I can speak personally to those two schools that I have been proud to represent for the last six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give it up for Mr. Liddell from Central High School. His principal. Mr. Moody from Idewell, come across the front.
And Mr. Liddell, I forgot to give Mr. Liddell a shout out from Central.
Dr. Liddell from Central High School, Ms. Mullins from Snowden, and Mr. Moody from Idewell. Board members, will you go down to take a picture, please? Board member McKinney, you have Snowden right.
I heard her.
We want to congratulate our Holiday Card winners and their teachers by having them come up while we show a digital presentation of their work. We highlight this work that was completed in a visual art classroom during the instructional day. Additionally, the inclusion of art and music during the instructional day increases the academic achievement of our, of our district students. We will continue to focus on the arts and MSCS. Please help me in celebrating the following students and their teachers. Elementary first place Sophie Kaskic, Snowden School, Valerie Harris, the art teacher. Second place, as I call your name, please come across. Aubrey Kason, Snowden School, Ms. Harris, the art teacher. Third place Essence Givens, John P. Freeman Optional School. Pauline Winters, art teacher. Honorable mention Katia, Katia Rivera, Jackson Elementary, Shelley Owens, art teacher. Snow Day winner Jocelyn Lopez Sales, Sheffield Elementary, Jill Watts, art teacher. Middle school, first place Arlie Miranda, Treadwell, Treadwell Middle, Emily Safidah, art teacher. Second place London Kaya, Mount Pisgah Middle, Ms. Harris, art teacher. Third place Alania Gray, Mount Pisgah Middle, Ms. Harris, art teacher. Honorable mention Gabrielle Stamp, White Station Middle, Miranda Bavier, art teacher. Snow Day winner Kaylee Panada, Treadwell Middle, Ms. Safidah, art teacher. Our high school, Angelina, first place Angelina Ton, Germantown High School, Ashley Gerst, art teacher. Second place Kennedy Matthew, White Station High, Sharon Mylum, art teacher. Third place Madison Dodd, White Station High, David Pentecost, art teacher. Honorable mention Alicia Bell, White Haven High, Ms. Sharon Mylum, art teacher. Snow Day winner, Mona Takem. Narula, White Station High, David Pentecost, art teacher. Congratulations to all of our winners. Commissioner McKissick.
I'm sorry, my apologies, that's leftover from a previous.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you. The question now is on the approval of the agenda, are there any amendments?
Madam Chair, there are no amendments.
Madam Chair, I would like to remove item number ten point one, proposed policies. For the second reading.
There being no further amendments to the agenda, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Love, second by Commissioner Murphy. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner McKissick.
Aye.
Commissioner Garcia.
Aye.
Commissioner Porter.
Aye.
Commissioner Murphy.
Aye.
Commissioner Love.
Aye.
Commissioner McKinney.
Aye.
Commissioner Otte.
Aye.
Commissioner Williams.
Aye.
Board Chair Coleman.
Aye.
You have nine in the affirmative.
Thank you, that motion passes. We are now on to the chair's report. This evening, I would like for you to join me in wishing our very own Board Advisor, Mr. Rashawn Jenkins, a happy thirtieth birthday. Dr. Schultz, will you please lead us in serenading him?
Please join me. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Rashawn, happy birthday to you, and many more.
At this time, I would like to take the opportunity to recognize Memphis Academy of Science and Engineering for claiming this pro- their, their very first, their very first ever Blue Cross Bowl. Sir Karen. These young men made history for being the first charter school in, in the state to win. They didn't just win, they won with a thirty-six to fourteen victory against South Pittsburgh. Let's give it up for them. The principal is Dr. Gaston. And their head football coach is Coach Miller, let's give it up for them. Congratulations, young men. Boy, please take a picture. Boy, please take a picture. And they came bearing gifts for us, so we thank you all so much. Congratulations, keep it going. We are now on to the Superintendent's report. Oh, wait, wait, you can take one more picture, you can go take one more, I got one more. At this time, we would like to recognize Mr. Mario Bradley, Vice Chair Love would like to recognize him. I do apologize, he'll be here next week. We would like to recognize, we'd like to ask Ms. Sharon to stand, please. Ms. Sharon has helped our SROs to become unionized, so our SROs are unionized. She's worked tirelessly, untilously with them to help them, so we thank you, Ms. Sharon, and we recognize you on tonight. Thank you so much. You got one more picture, you ready? Okay, now we are on to the Superintendent's report. Superintendent Fagan?
Madam Chair, for this evening's report, we've uploaded it online for the community and printed it for you. I will not read it or go through it, but this is quarter two's report comparable to quarter one, sharing just some of the highlights from quarter two respectively, if you would. Just some key highlights, we focus some more on our teacher development, especially after hearing from some of our new teachers stating some of the opportunities for us to grow in, some special programs, including support for our multilingual learners, community engagement, of course, and mentioned earlier about strengthening our partnerships. We give a financial overview here about expenditures and fiscal responsibility, and then, of course, attendance and enrollment, just keeping up with the patterns there. We give some of our needs and certainly highlight some of the continued challenges that we experience in a rather detailed report, and certainly at the next meeting or in between time, looking forward to questions about the same.
Thank you. We are now on to the agenda of staff action items. The first item on the agenda today. 9.1 Contract Approve AT&amp;T Emergency and Security Telephone Services.
The recommendation is that the board approves the annual renewal of emergency and security telephone lines with AT&amp;T, a sole proprietorship based in Memphis. This is in the amount of $624,664.80. This contract term is for one year with the option to renew for an additional term.
9.2 Contract Approve Renaissance Convention Center Event Rentals M S C S Graduations 2025.
This recommendation is for the board to approve the Renaissance Convention Center rental contract in the amount of $208,042.80. This is for graduation ceremonies to be held at the Cannon Center and Renaissance Convention Center during business as Memphis Management Group.
Graduation season is approaching. 9.3 Approve of Science Textbook. I apologize, Vice Chair Love?
Superintendent, a lot of schools. They're going to, recently, they had their graduations inside the church. You care to explain?
The question is, you want to update on schools that previously held their ceremonies in a church? You want to know what the district stance is on that. Going to defer to council to provide this explicit response provided, so that we're all in one accord.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, Madam Vice Chair. I don't know that I can speak specifically to the district's plan moving forward, but what I can say is that the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the Constitution, separation of church and state, prohibits the government, which we are a government entity, literally from establishing a religion, but also, I think it's an impediment to us holding events in churches or something that we've certainly discussed.
And the reason why I ask this question, because a lot of my students go to Bolton High School, and parents have been calling me. Previously, they were assigned to Bellevue Church, free of cost. And now the school is looking for somewhere to to hold their graduation. Does does the district specify where the graduations can be held outside of church?
I, I don't, I don't know what.
Church is out.
Yeah.
We are approving a contract for the Convention Center and Renaissance Center. What happens if a school doesn't want to use the Renaissance Center in a convention center?
Then, yeah, that's not a question I can answer, Superintendent?
Madam Vice Chair, so these are for schools who will hold them, and we list them in the actual item. Other schools like Bolton, like they have theirs at their school, there are some that have them in conventions, I mean, other spaces other than this particular convention center. There are schools like White Haven that will have them on the football field, so.
Will the schools be responsible for paying, paying that fee outside of the Convention Center and Renaissance?
The district, the district pays, is fiscally responsible.
That's what I was asking.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
General Counsel?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just want to clarify, Madam Vice Chair, that, and Superintendent, that these would have to be looked at on a case-by-case basis. It's not across the board where it absolutely cannot, where absolutely prohibited from having events at churches. There are certain things and considerations have to be taken into place, or taken under advisement, such as iconography, where in the church, for instance, if a church gym is being used or something like that. So, I just want to clarify, there are certain limited exceptions to that, but it is something to be considered, and something that we have to take into consideration on a case-by-case basis when we are choosing where we're holding school events.
Thank you. We're going to stop for just a moment, we asked, someone asked the young people outside, we know they're excited, but we're, it's a distraction from in here, so just give us one moment, please.
They're just making the situation worse. They're just making it worse, that's all they're doing. They're just making the situation worse, they don't know how to shut up. Sometime when that stuff happens, they make the situation worse.
Thank you for your patience, we will move, we will move on, 9.3. 9.3 Approve of Science Textbook Selection Committee.
The recommendation is Shelby County Board of Education approves the K-12 Science Textbook Selection Committee for the 24-25 school year. The textbook adoption committee ensures the district's textbooks are aligned with the state-approved, high-quality instructional materials. Madam Chair, is it necessary that I read the names into the record? Dr. Schultz, it's in the item?
Probably not.
Okay, great, because there are 63 of them. Okay, so for clarification, for the record, this is not the purchasing of textbooks, this is just for the approval of the committee to select the science textbook in alignment with the state's requirements.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, Dr. Fagans, is that loaded, because the version we have is not, doesn't have the names?
It should, everything should be loaded. It should, I see it printed, but it's, everything that you have printed should also be loaded. What they display on the screen is just a brief presentation slide. I think I see Board Member Hewitt Garcia has it. The actual documents are online as well, correct? Okay. According to the board office, they're online. She shares, there's other documents attached. If I hear Board Member McKinney correctly, you're sharing that in your review, you're not seeing it. If we could double check. Or if you could go to that screen? You saw them?
9.4 Approve of Caldwell Guthrie Library Core Collection.
Recommendation is for approval of the purchase of books for the library core collection at Caldwell Guthrie K-8 from Follett Content in the amount of $109,469.35. This is to meet the library collection standards outlined by the Tennessee State Library. This requires school libraries to provide 15 to 17 items per student for a standard collection.
Commissioner McKinney?
I just have a question in terms of timing. Is there any reason we're just getting this, because I looked at it and we're going to get this in by the conclusion of quarter three committing, yeah, the conclusion of quarter three. So, my guess, my question is, when is the conclusion of quarter three?
I don't have that date readily available.
All right, could you?
Quarter three end. February, right before spring break? They're looking at, Board Member McKinney?
Okay, thank you.
9.5 Approve of Snowden K-8 Knowledge Tree Furniture.
Recommendation is for the board to approve the furniture order in the amount of $165,175.69 from Knowledge Tree. This is for additional furniture necessary to integrate the additional technology that was previously purchased, and this is to create a functional STEM lab for the students in grades six through eight.
Commissioner McKinney?
Again, that's, Snowden is in my district, and I want to say that's great. Do we have any other of these grants that are going to be available to other schools? Or have any other schools gotten these grants?
Innovative Schools Model Grant? Specifically, or just any grant in general?
The grant that were, the Innovative Schools Model Grant.
It's for all middle schools.
So, all of the middle schools are going to get the same furniture and equipment?
If, if, Dr. Tinkson, if you want to provide a little bit of clarity?
Good afternoon, Board Chairs, Members, I'm sorry, good afternoon, good afternoon to the Superintendent. Yes, this is actually a grant that was funded last year, so many of the middle schools have already applied, received furniture and equipment and computers last year, it's just Snowden was able to purchase laptops and printers last year, and they're using the leftover money or the balance of the monies to purchase furniture this year. So, that's what's occurring at Snowden, to finish up the STEM lab.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, returning to item 9.4 to respond to Board Member McKinney's question regarding when quarter three ends, it's March 7th. March 7th?
9.6 Approve of Memphis Symphony Orchestra.
Recommendation is for the board to approve the contract for services provided by Memphis Symphony Orchestra in the amount of $82,800. These services include student engagement opportunities through tunes and tales, side-by-side concerts, and the Young People's Concert.
9.7 Contract Renewal Mansfield Oil Company.
The recommendation is for the board to approve contract renewal to Mansfield Oil Company of Gainesfield Incorporated from January 2nd, 2024 to October 30th, 2025, in the amount of $4 million. This is to purchase and deliver fuel. This purchase replenishes the fuel warehouse inventory for use by all of our district vehicles and buses.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, Commissioner McKinney, Commissioner Otte?
Thank you. I was just curious if we've had any conversations about electrification of our fleet to reduce oil costs?
Short answer, consideration, yes.
Thank you. What, do we have any idea what the cost difference is?
Not yet.
Commissioner McKinney?
I have a question, just, I noticed that this crosses over two fiscal years, is this something that we normally do?
It's not abnormal for a contract to go in through a different year comparable to like our custodial contracts.
So, my question becomes, if we're, we're getting ready to get into budget season, so what does, I want to make sure that we're, we're we are doing what we need to do to think about how we budget for the fiscal year that we're in for full fuel costs. So, that's what I wanted to ask that question since we're getting ready to get in budget season.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Otte? 9.8 Contract Approve of Bottle Water Filter Purchase?
Recommendation.
Granger.
Recommendation is for the board to approve the award to WW Granger in the amount of $112,356 for the purchase of 1,800 bottled water filters at a unit cost of $62.42 per filter. This will replenish the maintenance parts warehouse stock, and Granger was the cheapest bidder and was awarded the bid for a unit cost of $62.42. Just for additional information, the filters are changed every six months, so just replenishes our stock.
Superintendent, do all of our schools have the bottled water filters up and running yet?
Ms. Stewart, what's the latest update? I recall the report, but not specifically.
Hi, good evening. As of today, actually, every single school has a working bottle filler except for one, and that will be completed by the end of the week.
Thank you.
They're not all complete, but every school has at least one functioning.
That's a lot better than where we were.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Vice Chair Love? 9.9 Approve of Man Up Teacher Fellows Incorporated?
The recommendation is for the board to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Man Up Teacher Fellows. The purpose of this is to establish a partnership with the district and Man Up Teacher Fellows to address teacher recruitment, mentoring, and development. We're aiming to increase the number of highly qualified educators, specifically men, within the district, particularly in high-need schools.
Thank you. 9.10 Contract Approve of Study.com Practice Support? I'm sorry.
I have one question about the nine point nine, the Man Up. This is a great program and I was wondering what other EPP programs that we have as we try to, to increase our teacher, our teacher positions and, and fill those positions? Do we have other partners?
Beyond our district partners, I mean, beyond our higher education partners? Are you thinking more nonprofit like this, or?
I'm thinking about any pro, partners that we have that are gonna help us to fill the teachers shortages.
Okay, so we can get that list to you?
I appreciate it.
Vice Chair Love?
No response.
Let me read you. Nine point one oh, Contract Approval Study.com Practice Support.
The recommendation is for the board to approve a contract with Study.com for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. This is to provide additional licenses granting first and second-year teachers on a permit or waiver access, giving them access to Study.com's Library of Professional Certification Test Prep resources for the praxis and the paraprofessional exams. This contract includes six months of access for secondary and specialty teachers at a cost of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, as well as twelve months of access for our elementary teachers at a cost of seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Again, we've shared in previous reports that one of the major challenges of having a lot of teachers who are committed to being a teacher or a professionally certified educator is that when it comes time to take the praxis, there is a great struggle. And so this particular resource is what we'd like to make available.
Excuse me, Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, Commissioner McKinney.
This is great. I'm glad that we're supporting our teachers who are trying to get a permit. Is there any plan for professional development about how to navigate and use Study.com? Or how to navigate, or sort of test-taking approaches? Or, or tutoring that we could offer, thinking through standardized tests? Speaking as myself who's taken praxis and not an exceptional standardized test-taker. So just thinking about the environment, are we gonna have human support around this?
Right, so the team currently offers that as well. So this is one more resource that we're adding. So currently, the professional learning team provides that in alignment with whatever the respective needs are from those who are showing up at the sessions. I think our greatest opportunity right now is just getting people to show up to receive the support.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner McKinney?
Thank you. I'm really invested in making sure that we get more teachers. And one of the things I want to commend around this is that we are actually supporting our first and second-year teachers. One of the questions I have is that, is there any reason why we're doing six months for secondary and specialty as opposed to extending them to save twelve months as we're doing for elementary school teachers?
I don't have a direct response to that, Board Member McKinney. If Mr. Langson reports back in, we can circle back to the item. If not, I can get it to you via email.
Right, and I just want us to get that number and think about it. Because again, we're going into budget season and this is an investment that's potentially worthwhile.
And to clarify, if I hear you correctly, you, the preference may be to just see both of them equal? Both for twelve months? Or have them match if there's not a specific reason why they're different?
Right, and I imagine that we've got data on this and that it would be beneficial to make sure that we have the same twelve months for all of our first and second-year permit or waiver teachers.
So the previous contracts, while this is a recurring contract, there's no data available. There was no monitoring for it, and so we will monitor this time to be able to share that back.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Love?
How many teachers does this contract call for?
So we have, year one, there are two hundred and seventy-five teachers who are first-year. In year two, there are four hundred and thirty. Year three, there are six hundred and twos for a total of one thousand, three hundred and seven teachers currently on a permit.
And I have another question. If they don't pass the first test, can they go back again?
They can retake, and I think that's, not I think, but I'm confident, that's another challenge that we have is that it's expensive to continue taking the tests. So we are looking at considering how we might support in terms of payment. We're also considering tuition for those who are, you know, in school as well. So looking at a, a, a variety of opportunities to further support, but yes, they can retake.
Thank you. Commissioner McKinney?
I think one of the other things that may supplement this is the legislative agenda that we just passed. Where we're trying to make sure that there's ways to offset that cost. If there's, if they meet to a certain point or percentage point, they can get to that next level and get their, and pass their praxis. I have no idea what it looks like and I don't want to. Because I know it's a, it's a difficult thing and I don't envy the teachers taking them.
Absolutely. I do sit on the state's committee for the teacher pipeline and so those are some of the conversations that we've been having.
Nine point eleven approval, MOU between Memphis Shelby County Schools and the Shelby County Health Department for HIV, HIV testing.
The recommendation is for the board to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the district and the Shelby County Health Department to expand clinical services through HIV. My item starts to skip around. Nevertheless, through HIV and STI testing, counseling, treatment, education, clinical training, and providing proactive programs and services to the students and families within the Memphis Shelby County School System.
Commissioner McKinney, Vice Chair Love?
I think that's an excellent contract that the Shelby County Health Department, I think I remember that Dr. Taylor came in and talked about that, that work and wanting to partner. I understand that we're gonna collate, co-locate in some of the existing clinics. So could you tell us how many of those clinics we have, where they're located? And there are some other locations. Have we identified any other locations and how are we identifying those locations?
Dr. Whitelaw?
Yes, so first of all, to Superintendent Fagans as well as to board members, I would like for us to give us a round of applause to Dr. Taylor. She is in the audience with us this afternoon. So just some additional questions that we may have. And Dr. Fagans wanted her to be in the room as we talked about this conversation. So just wanted to make sure we recognize, definitely we have two clinics that we will be using, but also we'll be working as well because I know that we've talked about some additional sites that we may be able to use. But we definitely will be talking with the health department, but we will use in our two sites that we have now.
To, for clarity, Dr. Whitelaw and Dr. Taylor, if there is additional information, have we not identified the additional locations just yet?
We've identified the two sites that we're currently using now. That's East High School and Sheffield. So those are the two sites that we are starting with. And any other, we will bring that information back.
Okay, I appreciate that and I'm glad that Dr. Taylor is in the room because I know that you talked about specific locations where you see a high incidence of, of the HIV and STIs. So I would love for us to think about this strategically and make sure that we're in those locations that we make it very easy for our families and children to get to these clinics. Thank you.
Vice Chair Love, Commissioner Murphy?
I want to say hey to Dr. Taylor. And Superintendent and Angela Whitelaw, don't forget the unincorporated areas. Me and Amber share the unincorporated areas and you cannot forget them.
Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to sit with Dr. Taylor previously and we were discussing some other locations that they were working on. So I hope that in the near future, we'll be able to have that opportunity to have those programs in South Memphis. I was excited to see all of the different things that they are trying to do in all the other different locations that they are trying to put that program into. And I think that it will benefit our children who are not educated on sex education, HIV, and STI. So thank you, Dr. Taylor, for that. I appreciate it.
Nine point one two, Contract Approval American Paper and Twine Paper.
Recommendation is for the board to approve the, the award to American Paper and Twine in the amount of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of one hundred and forty-two thousand reams of duplicating paper at a cost of four dollars and fourteen cents per ream. This is to replenish our inventory for district-wide usage.
Nine point one three, Con, Approval Project Aware Grant External E evaluator Contract. Thank you for fixing it.
Absolutely. Recommendation is for the board to approve the Contract for Professional Services with EMT Associates for an external project aware evaluator. This is in the amount of ninety-five thousand dollars and includes a term effective January sixth, twenty-twenty-five to January sixth, twenty-twenty-six. There are two options to renew for one year each, each term for a cost of ninety-five thousand dollars per term. These services are based on the results from a request for a quote. Purpose for this evaluator is to ensure compliance with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, federal performance requirements, and support continuous quality improvement for the district's aware program. The evaluation team will collect, analyze, and report data on key performance measures to district leadership, state partners, and the grants' project officers.
Commissioner McKinney?
I have a question about this grant. When did we start this grant?
Dr. Whitelaw?
Thank you. Superintendent Fagans and Board Member McKinney, this is our third year of the grant and we've been awarded. So this is our third year going into the grant.
Okay, do we have, that we've, have we had evaluation before?
No, we have not. So this will be where we need the external evaluator based on the federal program. So this will, they will be helping us to evaluate the program as the external evaluator. So we will be now taking this evaluator. They'll be coming in and looking at the work that we've done and the work that we have proposed to do in the future to give us insight.
Okay, so this is the third year and this is the first year that we've been asked to do it?
Well, this is the third year and we just gotta make sure that as we continue with the grant that we have an external evaluator. So this is where we are in that phase.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Whitelaw, for clarity, was this a requirement of the grant?
Yes, this is a requirement of the grant to have an external evaluator.
Thank you.
Nine point one four, Approval Special Course Applications for twenty-five, twenty-six.
The recommendation is for the board to approve the special course applications for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. When high schools want to offer courses to meet specific student needs or programs that do not already have Tennessee Department of Education course codes, the district has to apply for a special course code. These courses are for grades nine through twelve only. They're considered elective courses. The district needs to renew two electives which are currently being offered. That's Humanities and We the People. These applications are approved by the Department of Education for a specified period of time and the current approval for the two courses expires at the end of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Right now, this year, we have four high schools, Central, Cordova, Overton, and White Station that are teaching one or both of these courses. The total enrollment of these courses is one thousand, ninety-three students. One thousand, ninety-three.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia?
Yeah, is the We the People course, I'm inferring, is that a civics and citizenship-oriented course?
I'm sorry?
Is that related to civics and citizenship, We the People?
We the People is, is, is it, is that the name of it? Bill, okay, yes.
That is the, that is the content?
Yes.
Okay, I just, I wanna, one, I think it's great that we're, I know this is just a, a procedure here, but hearing that civics and citizenship are being taught in schools that maybe whoever is offering this course could share it with the rest of high schools that want to engage students on what it looks like to influence their democracy and understand it. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner McKinney?
And on that note, that's four high schools and I think we have how many, thirty, thirty-five?
Forty-one.
Forty-one high schools. So do they have something equivalent to this in those high schools?
They offer civics, right? So this is an elective course that aligns with the same We the People is? I just wanted to make sure that the title had that correct. Mr. White, is there any additional information that you can add?
I mean, there is a civics course that schools can offer and certainly schools offer a variety of electives. These are just some special courses that these particular schools chose to, to add to their course catalog. Now, this approval will allow other schools, if they want to add these particular courses, to do that.
I noticed that the way, only way that they can do it is long as they have the staff to do it. Because it costs an extra eighty-five thousand dollars to bring in a stu, another teacher, is that correct?
Yes, if they had to add staff, the average cost for a full-time teacher would be eighty-five thousand dollars. You know, now if they just wanted to add the one course and they can squeeze that in on another teacher's schedule or the one class, then, you know, you know, we're, we hope that it's not gonna require extra financial resources to offer these classes. And typically, schools have been able to work that out.
I appreciate that. As, again, we're going in the budget period and I'd like for us to be strategic about what we're offering our students. As we keep talking about, we want to make them career and college-ready. So if this is a robust curriculum that we could offer across the spectrum of high schools, that would be wonderful. I know that there may be some staffing constraints because not all schools can do what some of these other schools can do, one with their budget or to split their teachers as you all are saying. So I, I think if that's something that is a worthwhile investment, I would love to see what that looks like when we come to budget.
Thank you.
Nine point one five, Contract Approval Cordova Middle School Civil and Paving Project, Beasley's Paving Service Incorporated?
Madam Chair, the recommendation is for the board to award the contract to Beasley's Paving Services for seven hundred and two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and two cents for the civil and paving project. This one's at Cordova Middle School for paving improvements. This is one of the project build projects that the board approved as a part of our capital improvement program budget on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. Specifically, the parking lot in the driveway are scattered with potholes, stagnating water, and irregular pavement. And so, of course, this leads to damaged cars and buses and an unwelcoming environment.
Commissioner Love, Vice Chair Love, I'm sorry.
Superintendent, do you mind telling me the process for getting the schools repaved?
In terms of priority, like how do we prioritize it? So these specifically were those fifty-six projects that we brought for project build just feels like forever ago? Where we determined, just based on severity of, of the issue, the number of people, if you will, that are in the particular school that are impacted and affected. Certainly the cost that we had immediately available that could be provided or taken care of in the funding that was available at the time, which was the ninety-six million, I think we allocated for that. And a part of that was ESER funds as well. So just meaning, when, when can we get it done and allocate the funds from ESER as well? So a few different things determined and so we prioritized it. And to consider by district as well, so that certain districts weren't having projects more than others.
I would like for you to send me my district.
Just yours, yes, ma'am. Sure will.
Because a lot of principals been asking for it and I don't know what to tell them.
For clarity, do you want just the project build projects for your district or you want specific projects that are for paving?
Uh, both.
Both?
Nine point one six, Cordova High School Civil and Paving Project Vulcan LLC?
Much like the other item, Madam Chair, this recommendation is for the board to award the contract to, I suppose this is Bucon LLC for two million dollars for the civil and paving project at Cordova High School. Again, this was also approved in the project build project when the board voted on June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Same situation about the potholes, the irregular water in the pavement, so this is at Cordova High School.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, unlike Commissioner Love, if, I could get the same thing, because some of my schools, I think we need clarity about how we're priorit, the criteria of how we're prioritizing, because I know we've got the, we've got the parking lots, but we also have a school that, that's, children can't go through the front door pathway because the, the cement has come up, and so, they have yellow tape around that, and so, they have to come in through the side. So, I just want to make sure that I can explain to them what the, how we're doing this, and they can see for themselves when they're going to get their things dealt with in their, in their schools and outside of their schools.
Sure, we will take the weekly report that we give, and we'll just parse out your specific districts and send them to you individually, if that's okay.
Commissioner O'Teague?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say, thank you, Superintendent. Michelle, thank you for noticing this issue that we have over there, that some of the teachers have said we have craters and sinkholes in Cordova parking lot. I've been over there, I was just there yesterday, we truly do need that support, so looking forward to getting this work done for Cordova.
Nine point one seven, contract approval, Ridgeway High School Civil and Paving Improvement Project?
And this item is for the board to approve the contract to Bucon with no alternate selected for nine hundred and four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, and this is for the civil and paving project at Ridgeway High School. Again, this is the same as the previous two items, just providing asphalt paving patches or providing new paving, strifing, and accessories. This also ensures that we're in compliance with ADA and improving traffic patterns and driving conditions as well.
Thank you for Ridgeway High School. It's much needed. Nine point one eight, contract approval, Snowden School Civil and Paving Improvement Project?
Again, a series of paving, this one is for Snowden School in the amount of four hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-four cents.
Just a point of personal privilege, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Nine point one nine, contract approval, Overton High School Civil and Paving Improvement.
Again, this is for the board to, or requesting the board to approve the contract to Bucon for seven hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars for the civil and paving project. This one is at Overton High School.
Truly appreciate that one, that is, is pretty bad, but thank you. Nine point two oh, contract approval, Crump Stadium Track Resurfacing, A and B Construction Company.
Recommendation is for the board to approve the contract to A and B Construction Company. This is for six hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and twenty, four hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty cents. This is for the track resurfacing at Crump Stadium.
Nine point two one, contract approval, Kingsbury Middle School and High School Underground Gas Line Replacement, Damian Marcus?
Again, these are all project bill, we just want to ensure that the public understands that we're fulfilling our commitment to those fifty-six projects, and so, this one is a request for the board to award the contract to Damon Marcus for, Damon Marcus Incorporated for four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. This is for the underground gas line replacement at Kingsbury Middle and High School. Yes, ma'am.
Nine point two two, contract approval, Fraser Corning Elementary School Foundation Repair, APS Facility Maintenance?
This is requesting the board to approve the contract to APS Facility Maintenance in the amount of four hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. This is for foundation repair at Fraser Corning Elementary. Again, this is another one of our project build projects approved in June. Repairing these cracks, repairing these cracks will prevent further wa, water intrusion and prevent the widening and causing from other, other building issues as a result thereof. Of course, water intrusion into a building weakens and eventually ruins other things that you hear us report about, the HVAC systems, ceilings, floors, and walls.
Vice Chair Love?
Point of personal gratitude, because this is my district, and they need it.
Yes, ma'am.
Nine point two three, contract approval, Rozelle Elementary School Foundation Repair, APS Facility Maintenance?
Again, this request is for the board to award the contract to APS Facility Maintenance in the amount of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and five dollars and ten cents. This is for foundation repair at Rozelle Elementary, again, another one of our project build projects.
Nine point two four, contract approval, Cordova High School Sports Field Lighting Project Barnes and Brower Incorporated?
Another one of our project build projects. Recommendation is for the board to award the contract to Barnes and Brower, Brower Incorporated for four hundred and forty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety cents. This is for the lighting at the sports field at Cordova High School.
Nine point two five, contract approval, Bolton High School Sports Field Lighting Project, IQO LED Lighting Incorporated?
This is requesting the board to award the contract to IQO LED Lighting Incorporated for six hundred and forty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy cents. Again, this is for lighting replacement at Bolton High School.
Nine point two six, Southwind High School Field Light, Lighting Project Barnes and Brower Incorporated?
The recommendation is for the board to award the contract to Barnes and Brower Incorporated in the amount of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty cents for the sports field lighting replacement, and this is at Southwind High School.
Nine point two seven, Kingsbury High School Field Lighting Project, A and B Construction Incorporated?
This is to award the contract to A and B Construction Incorporated for four hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents. This is for the sports field lighting replacement at Kingsbury Middle and High School.
Nine point two eight, Germantown High School Gym Floor Replacement Amendment, Covington Flooring Company Incorporated?
Board, this is a request to extend the contract that we have in place to April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, due to the required additional work with Covington Flooring Company Incorporated. This is in the amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars. So, again, this work has already started, but in the process, additional work was deemed necessary. The original contract for Germantown High School was to replace, was for wood for floor replacement, and that was approved August twenty-seventh of last year, and so, as the project progressed, the demolition of this floor unveiled a wet concrete slab with higher-than-normal moisture, and that prohibits the new floor system from being completed, and so, this is to extend the contract, and it was an additional amount of thirty-four thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Nine point two nine, contract amendment, Cromwell Elementary School Norris Achievement Academy and Shrine School HVAC Upgrades?
This is to replace the HVACs at these respective schools. The request is to approve, to approve the amendment to the contracts two zero two five dash zero one zero nine, two zero two five dash zero one one two, and two zero two five dash zero one one three, to amend the final completion dates from July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five to December tenth, twenty twenty-five.
So, there's no dollar amount, just extend the time?
No dollar amount, and we are working on this. This was an administrative error, and so, the contract end date should have been December tenth, as opposed to July thirtieth.
For all three schools?
Yes, ma'am, for all three schools.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy?
Thank you so much, Madam, Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, this is much needed, these are my schools and my districts, so I do appreciate it even being on for approval. They have been having issues with the air and the heat, so I appreciate that, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Nine point three oh, approval, Administration Building, Germantown High School and Sheffield High School Fire Alarm Upgrades?
The recommendation is to approve the contracts for fire alarm upgrades at the Barnes Administration Building and Sheffield High School. These projects are anticipated to be completed by December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The total cost for the Administration Building is five hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. The total cost for Sheffield High School, six hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. Madam Chair, we removed Germantown High School, it should not show on anyone's, it should not. Okay, so I'll make the correction on the record that we removed Germantown High School in consideration for, of, just selecting new buildings and then just placing our money where we need to, with an understanding that we'll be shifting soon.
We're removing Germantown High School?
From nine point three zero, it should not be in yours in terms of a fire alarm upgrade. The number is still the same. Administration Building and Sheffield High School Fire Alarm Upgrades is how it should read. The information in the item should only reflect the Administration Building Fire Alarm Upgrade and the Sheffield High School, High School Fire Alarm Upgrade. Germantown High, Germantown High School was removed.
It is removed from?
Remember, Germantown High School is in the consideration for the New East Region High School, so relocating there, we just want to be mindful about our investments, and so, the total investment for that, we can share it with the board, I don't remember it off the, the top of my head, but it's quite significant in demonstrating that investment while we're thinking about, and we know we have to have a new building, we just wanted to be mindful.
Commissioner Murphy? Commiss, Commissioner, Vice Chair Love?
Madam Superintendent, how much of the sixty-four million dollars do we have left? When all these projects are completed?
For clarity, Vice Chair, are you, when you say sixty-four million, are you referring to the total project build?
Um, deferred maintenance cost.
A part of the sixty-four million deferred maintenance cost after these investments, you're asking how much will we have left?
Yeah.
Mr. Langston, are we understanding the question as presented?
Sixty-four million was approved by the board last, this budget year. We are approving several contracts. I want to know, how much do we have left after we approve this contract?
Madam, thank you, Madam Superintendent, Board Members. Board Member Love, I understand your question, I'll have to give it, get it back to you, but with the understanding that we have fifty-six projects that we set aside the sixty-four million for, so you may not see them all today, that anything you've seen up until this point, I'll give you that number, then what's left, just be mindful that we've allocated, they're coming, they're probably just out to bid for now, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hugh Garcia?
I just want to clarify, we keep saying sixty-four million, I thought it was ninety-four million for Phase One that we approved in our general budget. It was ninety-four million, and how is that different from the update that we get in our weekly insights about Phase One progress? Like, is that, are we talking about two different things?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Langston.
Thank you, Board Member Garcia, for your question, it's the same thing, the sixty-four million dollars is allocated for the general fund, total is ninety-four million dollars, we did a combination of using ESAR and general funds, fund balancing ESAR, if that makes sense. But to your point, it's all on project bill, but if we needed to add a, I heard Board Member Love asking us to, as we add a project, go ahead and give the board a running total of what we used up to date, so take in, and then we'll, we'll share that with the board this week in the board insight.
Okay, thank you.
Nine point three one, approval, three land purchase sales agreement termination notices?
The recommendation is for the board to approve the three termination notices for the land purchase sales agreements to Farrell Paving, one agreement, agreement, and Aaron Land Development, those are two agreements. This is to terminate these agreements that were approved for the purchase of the land where we were going to build the New East Region High School. Additional background needed?
I actually had a question about the previous item. So, as I think about us doing the deferred, deferred maintenance and having that budget of ninety-four million, and I know that we have to spend most of it, the ESAR funds, which was what, sixty-four million of that, was sixty-four million? Is that correct? Thirty million? Okay, I'm just thinking about, we're getting the facilities report, and I'm thinking about, just like we had to pull Germantown out because we're not going to have Germantown anymore, have we done a crosswalk when we get that facilities report around what we said we're going to do now, and then what those facilities look like, and then is there an opportunity for us to think strategically about, maybe we need to, how we use those dollars, depending on what the priorities are in particular schools, and whether those schools are going to be something that we're going to put more money in, or we're going to think about how we get better facilities, maybe use that money. So, I'm just asking, have we done the crosswalk between the two?
A crosswalk, immediately, no, this item, we literally just pulled, so it's the first one that we committed to on the project build spreadsheet, and we're not actually following through with.
Yeah, I, I get that, but I'm saying, we have a project build spreadsheet, and we have all of these buildings that we're going to do things to. So, with all that, that list, I wanted to know, given, I, we haven't seen the facilities report yet, so are we doing a crosswalk between what we are planning on investing here and what that facilities plan says, what the facilities assessment says? So, I saw on here, we got a hundred and eleven-year-old building, and we're about to put some money into a hundred and eleven-year-old building, and so, my question becomes, is that the best use of our money? And it may have to be, because we can't do anything about it, but this is a good opportunity for us to think strategically about working with our partners at the county commission, helping us figure out how we build new and better for our students where it makes sense, particularly since we'll have the facilities plan as well, or the assessment. So, I, I'm just asking us to think strategically.
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, to make sure I answered your question, no, we have not done an immediate crosswalk just yet, but yes, we do understand in general, a strategic investment of the funds, all things considered, age of buildings as well.
Nine point three two, approval memorandum of understanding between the Shelby County Government and Memphis Shelby County Schools Exceptional Education on behalf of incarcerated youth.
The recommendation is for the board to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Shelby County Government and the district on behalf of incarcerated youth with exceptionalities. This is to establish policies and practices for the development and implementation of incarcerated youth facilities in the Shelby County jails and Shelby County Division of Correction Facilities. This is specifically for students ages eighteen to twenty-two and the juvenile detention facility for students under the age of eighteen. The current number of students served as of December, I anticipate, as of December eleventh, twenty twenty-four in the Shelby County jails is twenty-seven. At the penal farm, it's eight, and at Hope Academy, sixteen. Again, this is to ensure that those students are receiving their services and rights under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And I believe there was a question via email where we had a limited conversation, but this goes along with that.
Commissioner McKinney?
Yes, we all received the email from Commissioner, County Commissioner Sugarman, about the about the enrollment at the youth detention or center. And also whether there were, I know there's a bunch of issues around who brings students to the classroom? And so that's something outside of our purview. What I am, I want to make sure that we're clear for the public and for Board Members and also for County Commissioner Sugarman is that we do have those services available, right? Or is this, this contract is a continuation of one that we already have? Or is this one, just help me to understand whether this is a continuation and we didn't have any gap? Do we have any?
This is, the recommendation is for the annually updated MOU, so this is already existing and we're just bringing it here. But yes, short answer, yes. It already exists.
Okay, we did not have a gap. It has to be renewed.
We didn't have a gap, right?
We did not have a gap.
There was no gap.
Nine point three three contract approval Comp TIA.
The recommendation is for the Board to approve the contract and award to Comp TIA in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars for the purchase of post-secondary supplies and materials needed for students to earn their Comp TIA and MOS credentials and test-out platform to prepare students for attaining industry credentials. Specifically, this is for students who are enrolled in web design, cybersecurity, coding programs of study so that they can get the online training, hands-on labs, exam prep, instructional tools, all in one single platform. And these students are also taking office management. There are a host of classes that they take. So this allows our industry credentials to be afforded to these students.
Commissioner Porter, Vice Chair Love, Commissioner McKenney?
Madam Chair, Madam Superintendent, I was reading this earlier and I am really excited to see from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four, we had three hundred and seven students to earn their industry certifications. And I hope those students are doing well. I know what having certifications and degrees can just skyrocket their career. I do have two questions about classroom instruction. I would like to see how many CCTE teachers that we have or doing, yeah, CCTE teachers that we have to, just teaching these classes? And how much time is actually allocated towards those courses? And another thing is, you know, as we talk about strengthening the middle schoolers, see how we can offer these courses to at least eighth graders.
To your first question, for clarity, would you like a general list of CCTE teachers or teachers specifically teaching the courses relevant to this item?
Just relevant to this item, yeah. How many teachers are teaching Comp TIA classes?
Imperfect. To your second question, we are in master scheduling season and we are consistently looking at and thinking about how we expand many of these courses. Where available to our middle school students to begin the pathway earlier, so the yes.
And I also want to give a shout out to the dual enrollment department as well, because I know they do a lot of hard work. It's just overseeing those students and making sure they get to class and taking those online courses as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Commissioner McKenney?
I have a question about the, both of the, I guess it's the next three contracts and the certifications. These were, can you explain to me, these were the platforms for them to do test preparation for the certifications, also get the certifications as well? Is there any reason that we're doing it in midsemester as opposed to having it, having this contract signed at the beginning of the year?
Dr. Richmond, are you familiar with the end date of the previous contract? Is that the reason or is there a different reason?
Thank you Superintendent and Board Member McKenney. In relationship to these particular contracts, for some reason, they were overlooked. And so we're bringing them now because we know our students and schools need them. And so my team and I assume responsibility for that.
Nine point three four approval Career Safe OSHA ten.
Recommendation is for the Board to approve the request for the purchase of employability site licenses and OSHA ten-hour general industry from Career Safe. This is in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars for students to attain industry credentials who are enrolled in entry-level courses.
Nine point three five approval Internet Creative Educational Videos.
Recommendation is for the Board to approve the contract and award to CEV Multimedia LTD in the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars for the purchase of the ICEV online curriculum. This provides ready-to-teach courses including pacing guides and lesson plans, projects and activities, and assessments.
Nine point three six contract approval Vantage Learning LLC.
The recommendation is for the Board to approve the contract with Vantage Learning LLC in the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars. And this is to purchase My Access student licenses. This license provides a writing improvement program to ninth and tenth grade students at twenty-one of our soup schools. The program enhances student, anticipate, we anticipate that it will enhance student writing skills and assist with the benchmark testing and state test preparation. And the list of schools is included in the item.
Is this a continuation?
Dr. Richmond, I think this is new, correct?
No, I think this is a continuation. There's a typo in relationship to ninth grade. It should be sixth grade, six through ten. This is a continuation as part of our turnaround action grant for our priority schools.
So My Access has been used before? We just don't have previous outcomes?
Yes. Do we have the outcomes, Ms. Kine? Do you have a microphone?
Okay, if we could get the previous outcomes, if those are available, so we can make them available to the Board and the public? And we'll be sure to include these items or the data and items moving forward comparable to this.
Thank you. Vice Chair Love?
Superintendent, this is just for the priority schools?
So twenty-one of the soup schools is for just twenty-one, yes ma'am? Yes ma'am.
Nine point three seven approval contract renewal recommendation. City University School of Independence Charter Renewal Recommendations. Leadership Preparatory, Power Center Academy Elementary Hickory Hill and Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation.
The recommendation is for the Board to adopt the approval of renewal applications for Leadership Preparatory, Power Center Academy, Elementary Hickory Hill and Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation for an additional ten-year charter term. Ms. Parker, City University is included in the title. We don't name it in the recommendation. Is there?
Yes ma'am.
Is there a separate one?
Yes ma'am, there is.
It's coming up somewhere.
On the opposite side.
It's not included in the item that the Board, the item that the Board members have? They only show those schools that I read aloud. Do we have information on City University? School of Independence?
Yes ma'am, I do, if you, if you would like for me to proceed.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education, Shelby County Board of Education adopts the denial of the renewal application for City University School of Independence for an additional ten-year charter term.
So it sounds like we need to separate these items and their, and their item, they're all listed. And so let me just start over, Board, if I may, for clarity here. I don't see the denial, Ms. Parker or Dr. Richmond, actually as an item for the Board?
Yes ma'am, we can clearly separate it. As it's presented on the screen, I think they're all in one paragraph in the Board briefing that's on the screen.
Okay. For, for clarity, would the Board like to separate it or I can read just, if that's more helpful? Okay. Okay, so I'll start with the approval. Okay, so that's the item that I've read, to adopt the approval, and I'll just read it again, of renewal applications, and this is for Leadership Preparatory, Power Center Academy Elementary Hickory Hill and Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation.
Yes ma'am.
This is to adopt the approval of the renewal applications and this is for a ten-year charter term. The recommendation is for the Board to adopt the denial? We had questions about that one? Okay.
So I have a question about all of them, but particularly about the denial. I, the policy says that we use nine years. I understand that the law says.
Let us finish with the adopt first and then we'll do the denial, okay? Go ahead with that.
You're good? Okay.
Finish explaining the adopt.
For the adopt?
Yeah.
So renewal applications were required to be submitted by April first of twenty twenty-four. The public charter school renewal application must contain a report of the public charter school's operations, including students' standardized test scores, financial statements, and audits for the eight years immediately preceding the date of the renewal application. Renewals sites, visits were completed in the final year of each school's charter term, and that was as of September twenty twenty-four. So this renewal decision is based on the report and the evaluation as required by TCA four-nine-one-three-one-two-zero. And the Tennessee Charter Law states that a renewal of a charter agreement shall be for a period of ten academic years. And you have access to the individual reports in your blue folder?
So Chair, this is, are you recognizing me? Okay, this is across the board, just a general question. I know that our policy says we're supposed to look at the last nine years. I know that state law says eight. But I would like for us to ask General Counsel, take a look at this, not asking you for your opinion right now, but definitely before we come up against the, the date. Could you let me know whether our policy is in conflict with the law? Because as I read it, it is a floor and not a ceiling in terms of the eight years.
Yes, Board Member McKenney, I'll take a look at that.
Thank you. I'm not putting you on the spot to do it now. So with that said, I would just, I know that our policy also says if there's a non-renewal, that they have an opportunity to, to tell us. I think we have to be, they have to tell us why and we have to give the, the school that's being represented a saying, no, the non-renewal. We have to then give them an opportunity, if we ask for them, to give us the opportunity to tell us why we should renew them. But across the board, I'm just asking, should the data that we use, again, going back to the policy, be for nine years or eight years? So that's what I want to make sure we're clear on.
Commissioner McKissick?
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to make sure I'm clear on as far as the status of the schools that we're recommending for approval, that, how they are performing, Superintendent, regarding district-run neighborhood schools or schools that are near in proximity.
Ms. Parker, do we have an immediate comparison? I know that one school earned a B and two schools earned a C on their year-eight data, according to the report card. Is there additional data, Board Member McKissick, that would prove helpful in terms of enrollment? Just looking at the report here, Power Center Academy Elementary Hickory Hill is at one hundred and seven percent enrollment capacity. They have in grades K through five, they're at seven hundred and twenty-four in terms of enrollment. Looking at Leadership Preparatory Charter School, K eight, they're at about ninety-two point eight percent enrollment capacity. Which schools were the B and which two schools were C? Ms. Parker?
I would be happy to share that information with you. So Leadership Preparatory Charter School received a letter grade of a B for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And that's year eight, and that's why we're stopping at that particular year based on state law. The other two schools, Power Center Academy Elementary Hickory Hill and Granville T. Woods Academy of Innovation, those were letter grade C in twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, of course, we do have twenty-three, twenty-four data, but again, we're stopping at that year-eight data as it says in state statute.
If we can make sure that the public document is updated to reflect, I have the information that just one school has this and two schools have this. If we could just state which one?
Yes ma'am, I could definitely do that. Thank you. Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
The recommendation is the Board to adopt the denial of the renewal application for City University School of Independence for an additional ten-year charter term. City University School of Independence was approved in twenty thirteen. They opened in Memphis in twenty fifteen to serve a capacity of one hundred and eighty students in grades nine through twelve in the Whitehaven neighborhood of the Southwest District region. It currently has a tenth-grade cohort of fourteen students. Renewal applications, of course, were due by April first. Just pulling out the relevant information here. The school's interim five-year report status in twenty nineteen, twenty was severely off track. Schools that are recommended for non-renewal, they don't meet the three-point-O or better in each of the core components, which are academics, operations, and finance of the performance accountability framework. And City University School of Independence has either below a three-point-O standard in academics or has not met the threshold to obtain testing data throughout the majority of its charter term. City University School of Independence has been vastly under-enrolled for much of their charter term. The school has not earned a TDOE to Tennessee Department of Education School Letter Grade for the past two consecutive years, listed as not eligible for a letter grade due to falling below the threshold for the number of students tested. Of the fourteen students, five students would transfer to a school that has a lower SPS level than the standard three-point-O. Six students would go to a school that has a higher level than the three-point-O. And then three students would go to a previous achievement school district school that transitioned to the district in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Therefore, the data is not applicable. If the school closes, the nine licensed teachers, nine, would remain employed or could remain employed to continue providing educational services as normal to City University Liberal Arts that they duly serve. In preparation, if the Board approves the denial of the reapplication, then we will host, the Office of Charter Schools will host two parent-community meetings to discuss the rationale behind the non-renewal, the closure timeline, and then inform parents of the next steps for enrolling students in new schools for the upcoming school year. The denial would become effective at the close of this school year. The district could gain up to fourteen students. This is just the financial impact. And from the closure of City University School of Independence could retain state and local funds up to ninety-nine thousand, fifty dollars. The authorizer fee of four thousand, forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven. The authorizer fee of $4,047.54 would be forfeited by the district with the closure.
We are now on to board items. 10.1 has been removed.
We have... Oh, that's good. That's good. Yes.
10.2, discussion potential sale of former Lester School and former Knight Road Elementary.
The recommendation is for the board to declare surplus and approve the sale of Lester School at 320 Carpenter Street, Memphis, Tennessee 38112. To approve this sale to Capstone Education Group for $2.6 million. It's recommended that the board declare surplus and approve the sale of the former Knight Road Elementary School at 3237 Knight Road, Memphis, Tennessee 38118, also to Capstone Education Group. This for $1.65 million schools. $1.65 million. Capstone Education Group is a charter operator, and they've made offers to purchase two district properties, both Lester School and the former Knight Road Elementary School. Lester School has been operated by Cornerstone Prep for the Achievement School District for 10 years. They're now authorized by the Tennessee Charter Commission. State law stipulates that the district must either lease or sell the facility to the previous charter operator. The appraisal is $2.5 million. The offer is $2.6 million. The facility condition assessment for Lester identifies $9 million in 10-year maintenance needs. At Knight Road, students from former Knight Road Elementary School were merged into the new Parkway Village Elementary in 2019. This building has been occupied by various district administrative departments and virtual schools for the past four years. Virtual schools is currently the only occupant. Capstone operates Cornerstone Preparatory Elementary, which is authorized by the Tennessee Charter Commission, approximately two miles from the Knight Road building. And again, state law stipulates that charter schools have the right of first refusal to lease or purchase any underutilized or vacant district facility. The appraisal is $750,000. The offer is for $1.65 million. The facility condition assessment for Knight Road identifies $7.7 million in 10-year maintenance needs. With the lease agreement, just to place it on the record, the district is still responsible for 10-year maintenance needs. The district currently receives $4.25 million in proceeds and removes two surplus facilities from its inventory is what we anticipate being the outcomes from these sales.
Superintendent, what would happen to the virtual school students that are at Knight Road now?
They have been approved to remain there, Ms. Stewart. Is that correct? With some stipulations, I believe.
Yes, ma'am. They have been approved to remain there until we find a place where we would like to relocate them in the future.
Vice Chair La.
How many students are we talking about?
For virtual schools?
Yeah.
Remember, the students are virtual. The staff is in person. About how many staff are there?
About 20 staff.
Staff, not students.
Yes, ma'am.
Staff.
I got you.
Yeah. How many?
About 20 staff.
Superintendent?
Dr. Richmond?
Yes. We don't have students there full-time.
I made a mistake.
Pardon me?
Staff. I was talking about staff.
Yes, staff are there, but students, we do have office hours. So for students who are struggling virtually, they can stop in for office hours. I just wanted to give that caveat.
Commissioner Oktay, you turned your life on. Commissioner Hewitt Garcia?
Thank you. I just want to... We are selling the buildings, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I take this as, one, I know these individuals have been interested in these buildings. I shared a smile because this has been an inquiry for many years, so I think they're going to be thrilled. It... I read it that we are avoiding $16 million in deferred maintenance, getting that off of our rolls, and then bringing in about $4.1 million in cash. And we are required by law to give first right of refusal to charter schools. So I think this is a positive for our overall facility needs, thinking about the $4 million that's going to be able to be used for projects, and then also just the liability we have of aging buildings that are... We can do... We can co-locate and relocate, so I think this is great.
Absolutely. Part of our real estate plan, sale as much as possible for proceeds, and to be able to divert those funds into projects that we have for buildings that remain.
Commissioner McKissick?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to echo that my colleague that the benefit of this, and also to speak to staff being moved from that location. It's been my experience just as a parent when my son was taking virtual classes as well that had wonderful... When he had needed some extra help, had some wonderful intervention, all virtually. And so that's the beauty of virtual school, and this generation, they love to do everything via text. And so the teacher was extraordinarily accommodating, and so hopefully we can get this taken care of. Thank you.
10.3, approval policy change to board policy 1015 by Board Member Michelle McKissick.
Chair? Okay. Just want to make sure I was being called upon.
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Just wanted to speak to this for my colleagues. I do plan to send this to committee for further discussion, but I wanted to illuminate my mindset, my reasoning for bringing policy 1015. When it was first brought back in September, or actually was the concept was introduced back in August by a previous board member, it was meant to try to streamline things, to help things out. It has created some challenges, and so that was my motivation for bringing it forward, to try to write it. And so after having a very vigorous conversation with our wonderful General Counsel, and you know, we said that we would work toward, how can we make this better in terms of communication for the board and interaction as far as, you know, when legal counsel is needed? So a lot was tied up in this policy when it was first introduced, and it was rushed through, quite honestly, just in one as... In one meeting. And I want to make sure that we get it right, and we also honor the essence of what the policy was trying to suggest. So that is why I am recommending that we send this to committee for further discussion. We're going to work vigorously with the General Counsel to make sure we get it right. Thank you.
Okay. We can take it back to committee for February committee meeting. Okay? 10.4, approval resolution to retain Superintendent Dr. Marie Fagans. Board Member Hewitt Garcia?
Thank you. Before I address this item, I had a chat with the parliamentarian, and I just want to share... There's going to be a little bit of cleanup. The language of the resolution will stay the same, and I will talk about that. But if the parliamentarian... I get... One question I have is that we can't have another resolution that is contradictory to another main motion, yet I do not see the termination resolution on the agenda. So is this any longer in conflict with another main motion? Okay. So what... I'll let the parliamentarian make sure they don't miss anything, but essentially I am going to move to amend the resolution for termination with this as a substitute to replace that. So they are not... And so next week, you will still see that. You see slightly different language. This is going to be a substitute resolution, but I'll let the parliamentarian share the official response here.
Yes.
If that is okay with the chair.
He can... He may respond, yes.
Pleasure to be with you, folks. After a certain number of times around the sun, it's nice to be anywhere. This is a little hard to grasp, and it's a little hard to explain. Under Roberts, a main motion has special characteristics. You have a main motion that was brought, it was moved and seconded, and it now sits in committee. So it's within the control of the board. You cannot have another main motion on that same topic. Because what happens if you approve them both? Then they're in conflict with each other. So Roberts doesn't allow that. However, it can be brought as a substitute for what is currently before the board, and that'll happen when it comes before the board at the next meeting.
Thank you. I'd like just to share why I'm bringing this resolution tonight. I want to lay out a path of redemption for this board because the superintendent has indicated that she wants to continue in the job, and I personally want to continue to work with her. I've heard the things that I've outlined in this resolution are really getting at the core issues that were brought in the termination resolution. And we watched our district's funding body yesterday call upon some of the same things that I have outlined, that there is a strong need for governance, along with other things. The real... This is not a criminal trial, as we've talked about in the past. The real question before my colleagues is, do you want to work with Dr. Fagans? If the answer is yes, or maybe, let's make sure this resolution addresses any pain points, and we move through this and model what it looks like to problem-solve for our students. So this is the... This is what I want to bring into the room to have a real conversation about what can look different. So would you like me to read the resolution? I can give an overview. I think it is important, what I am actually laying out without reading the full context or reading the full text here, is that I called out what are the professional organizations that set standards for both superintendents and school boards. We have codes of conduct, analysis of what makes a good board member, makes a good superintendent. So the core components of this are really four things. I'm calling for stronger internal controls. So we've brought things like deadlines and RFPs, enhanced staff training, missing deadlines, analyzing workload, and there are Tennessee comptroller standards around this. So tightening that up and figuring out what resources we need. Communication improvement. This is not only just necessary. It is actually required in Dr. Fagans' current contract. So not only deciding on that, but implementing it. A human capital analysis, make sure we have the right people in the right places doing the work if we want to move the district forward. And then board governance training beyond what is required of us, and that is required by State Board of Education rules and regulations. I am asking for us to get a third party to assess how we all work together and provide professional training over the next year. In my resolution, I've proposed that we move that to May. I heard the county commission wants to see it in April, so I plan to align with what they're requesting of us as well. Under no circumstances, no matter what happens, we need that. And then throughout that, accountability at monthly meetings through the superintendent and chair of report, and then with initial resources brought forth before the body through our budget retreat that we have coming up, and through the budget process no later than June 30th. I really... I want to change the dialogue and the temperature and the expectations of ourselves and my constituents, the community. Anyone who's spoken on this has said, "At minimum, we need more time." And so I am advocating for Dr. Fagans to have more time to do the job that she was hired to do. So I hope my colleagues will consider this next week. I will bring some small amendments to this, and look forward to a vote.
Commissioner McKinnney, Commissioner McKissick. Commissioner McKissick, she gave it to you first.
Thank you. I would like to sign on to this resolution with Board Member Hewitt Garcia because the community wants us to do our job and to come together and to listen to them. I had a meeting with the president of both teachers' unions today, and it's very rare to have the two teachers' unions come together to say, "We are united." They know of their membership across this district. They're in school buildings all day long, and this is what they're hearing from the educators who are actually in the classroom with our students. And they wanted to share on behalf of their members who reached out to them to say that time, that's all they're asking for, to have real actual data to judge a superintendent on. And the time to actually do the job. She's been in this role less than the interim superintendent prior to her. And another principal told me as well that when you're in a job, when he was a first-time principal, it's like no matter the level of training that you're bringing to it, there's nothing like on-the-job training and what you learn and glean and grow and working together. And so in that spirit, I hope my board colleagues will really move toward time. We all need time. We all need to grow together. There is never a day where you cannot be better. We all need to be better. The superintendent, she knows that there's concerns that I've addressed with her. All of us have. No one's saying that anybody is perfect, but the time to work on things. And I think this resolution really strikes at the heart of that, of dialing it back. None of us are enemies with the goal of what we're trying to accomplish here. We want to help children. That should be at the core of this, and our community is crying out for us to do that. So I'm in support of this resolution, and I hope my colleagues as well will support it.
Commissioner McKinnney, Commissioner Porter?
Thank you. On December 17th and subsequent to that, I committed to my constituents and to the community that I would let you all know what my concerns are. So as an elected school board member, we carry a heightened responsibility to our students, parents, teachers, school leaders, staff, superintendent, and the larger community. Guided by federal, state, and local policies, laws, and regulations, as well as our own policies, our positions give us unique insight into district operations. It is important to recognize that our district is a $1.8 billion entity serving over 100,000 students and employing 14,000 staff members. This scale requires leadership capable of managing its complexity with transparency, foresight, and collaboration. Dr. Fagans has made notable efforts during her tenure, such as Project Build, Community Huddles, Teacher Engagement, and the introduction of the Legacy of Legends program. These initiatives demonstrate her willingness to engage with stakeholders and address specific needs. However, multiple things can be true at the same time. A leader can implement positive programs and make changes that we agree with and still demonstrate deficits that hinder the district's overall success. Bringing me to my areas of immediate concern. Student achievement and graduation, staffing and dismantling of student support systems without clear plans or internal controls, a pattern of mismanagement and failing to follow policy and employment contract terms, insubordination, and lack of transparency, and a pattern of leadership failures.
Point of order. This is outside the resolution. I'm just simply mirroring the point of order. This is outside the resolution.
Basically, you're asking... You're asking us... You're asking for us to support a substitute motion. So I am now saying, this is why I am not. First, I am deeply concerned about the immediate and tangible impacts on student achievement and graduation readiness caused by leadership shortcomings. As late as August 15th...
Point of order. The goalposts keep changing here. The goalposts keep changing. Point of order. Dr. Schultz, please weigh in. Dr. Schultz?
I just asked Dr. Schultz. I just asked him, and he said that she is within her rights. I... Be quiet, Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy, for like...
Thank you.
Be quiet. I just asked.
As late as August 15th... nine days after the start of school, principals reported that essential academic tools like the grade recourse recovery platform and ACT prep materials were unavailable due to contract expirations. This delay hindered critical grade recovery efforts and limited students' ability to prepare for standardized tests that are vital for college admissions and scholarships. Similarly, certification programs such as Comp TIA, Test Out, and Career Safe OSHA ten were left unfunded until we received the contracts today, halfway through the school year, directly jeopardizing our students' ability to earn the credentials required for career readiness and ready graduate status. These gaps in academic resources coupled with delays in foundational curriculum, such as the personal finance course for seniors, placed our students at a significant disadvantage in meeting graduation requirements. Second, the dismantling of critical student support systems without a clear strategy for implementation of an alternative structure that ensured all areas of need were covered, has harmed the district's ability to serve its most vulnerable populations. Namely, the elimination of the student equity department responsible for federal civil rights compliance, bullying investigations, and disability support was executed without a clear transition plan. This has appeared to leave significant gaps in services essential to ensuring equity and safety for our students. Additionally, similar issues surrounded the decision and failure to provide an alternative to proximity learning for virtual teachers exacerbating an already critical teacher shortage. This decision delayed access to one hundred certified teachers and threatens high school students' abilities to meet graduation requirements. Furthermore, the lack of transparency and planning around the elimination of hundreds of positions despite the board's request on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, for a clear restructure plan outlining the impacts on student achievement, budget, and district operations has resulted in significant operational inefficiencies. These shortcomings have created backlogs in hiring, pay disparities, and gaps in essential student services, further undermining staff morale and the district's ability to function effectively. Third, there is a troubling pattern of mismanagement. Failure to adhere to established policies and contractual obligations and misrepresenta, misrepresentations. For instance, the superintendent's unauthorized presentation of the district budget to the city coun, city council and county commission in direct violation of policy two zero zero one and state law demonstrates a disregard for governance protocols. Additionally, delays in approving essential contracts left principals and teachers without the resources they needed to effectively deliver instruction. The superintendent's micromanagement of overtime policies further disrupted operations, contributing to first day of school HVAC failures and other systemic issues. Instead of acknowledging the failure and her part in it, Dr. Fagans chose to deflect and avoid taking responsibility due to her refusal to allow overtime to address known HVAC system failures. These examples highlight a broader pattern of neglecting the processes necessary to ensure the smooth functioning of our district and opportunities for professional growth and development. Finally, Dr. Fagans' leadership has been characterized by a lack of transparency, strategic implementation, and collabora, collaboration. The student, superintendent's leadership has failed to provide equitable access to common formative assessments across the district. Contract delays and bidding issues have left priority schools without essential tools to track student progress effectively, forcing many schools to rely on limited funds or improvised methods like Chat GPT. Despite repeated board requests, there have been no clarity or comprehensive plan to resolve these issues, reflecting a broader failure of responsiveness and foresight in leadership. Decisions to let curriculum contracts expire were made without analyzing the previous year's academic data, and an academic audit was commissioned only after these decisions were implemented. This reactive approach raises serious questions about the superintendent's commitment to data-driven decision-making. Furthermore, reports of a climate of fear and intimidation among staff have eroded trust and stifled innovation, leaving our district without the cohesive leadership it needs to succeed. While I acknowledge and appreciate the positive contribution Dr. Fagans has made during her tenure, the totality of issues outlined here with documentation not provided to our attorney cannot be ignored. These concerns spanning academic impacts, operational failures, and leadership deficits require us to carefully evaluate whether the current leadership aligns with the needs of our district and the success of our students. As a board, we must reflect on our responsibilities and commit to growth and development. At the same time, we must sure, ensure that we have a superintendent who can build the trust necessary for effective co, collaboration with the board. This partnership is essential to moving the district forward and addressing the challenges we face. Our decisions in this process will shape the future of our district, and I remain committed to ensuring that our path leads to stability, equity, and success for all. It is with this commitment that I raise these concerns and advocate for a leadership approach that truly meets the district needs of our district. I'd like for everyone to think of, of our school system as a train. With its many cars representing the interconnected components of our educational system, elementary, middle, high schools, special education, student support services, and administrative operations. Each car is crucial to the overall functioning of the train, and together they carry the most important cargo, our students. The superintendent serves as the conductor, tasked with ensuring the train runs smoothly and safely. The board acts as the control tower, ensuring the train stays on track and identifying obstacles ahead that passengers or crew in individual cars may not see. While some in the cars may feel everything is fine, the control tower's vantage point reveals challenges and dangers that must be addressed before they derail the journey. While the conductor fails to act on these warnings, excuse me, when the conductor fails to act on these warnings or maintain the train's operations effectively, the entire system suffers. Cars can disconnect, delays occur, and the most vulnerable passengers, our students, are left stranded. This is the situation we face today, where leadership failures have jeopardized the stability and progress of our district.
Commissioner Hewitt Garcia, Amber. You can say. His light on.
I believe Board Member McKissick was before me, but.
Commissioner Porter, did you have something?
I'm not being funny. A simple no could have done. Um, you had a point of view already. You had a point of view before you took your seat. You've had a point of view that was constantly reinforced by loo, crossing the line of governance. Our job is not to, to execute the work. It is, it is to ask questions about the outcomes. And it is maddening to hear the the dis, the tone and the severity of which you framed things in response to this is so, um, it's disrespectful. Uh, it's, it's, it's deeply concerning because I, I am somebody who tries to see the perspectives of others. I, I really do. And I stand firm in giving more time to Dr. Fagans. And just as a closing my, I might talk again because I don't know what's happening here, but I just want to address her father. You saw I spent seven hundred and four minutes on the phone with her, so I built a strong relationship with her. I'm sorry you have to watch this. Uh, and thank you for being here. Thank you for our community members showing up. We are, I am trying to intellectualize something that is non-intellectual here. So, uh, I am standing firm where I am at. Community, y'all do what you need to do.
Commissioner McKissick.
Board Member Porter?
He's not, he's, he's, he turned his light off. It's you.
All right, so Dr. Schultz, uh, Chair, if I may. When it comes to next week, we are to stay focused on what is being proposed in terms of being a substitute of, of this agenda, whether we support it or not. That's going to be the focus, correct? Or tell me, please, sir. It's been a long meeting. I'll, I'll, as they say on TV, I'll rephrase the question. So as, as far as moving forward, and what are the next steps now with this substitute, um, resolution, and how we'll move forward come next week? What, what does that, can you tell us what that would look like?
Next week, the, uh, committee is required to report. I don't know what your report is going to be. I don't know if you've actually thought about that. We haven't actually had education on what happens in a committee. But you do have a motion. It had a second, and it was sent to a committee, and it will come back out of committee. That is what will be before you. At that time, you have choices to make. You can move to amend it in a variety of ways. You can amend words within it. You can do a blanket one, which is a substitute amendment. That's basically strike out and insert all the words, strike out all the words and insert all new words. When that happens, if, if you do it that way, which is, I believe, the direction it is going, you will be, you can make improvements to both documents at that time, both, both sets. And you will have a vote as to whether you wish to amend by substitution. If you do not amend by substitution, then the original one is what you will be voting on. That's the substantive item. If you do amend by substitution, then the substitute will be the one that you will be voting on in your final analysis.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schultz, for that extraordinarily detailed response. I just want to emphasize again to my board colleagues, every one of us has one vote, one vote. And no one's vote is more important than the others on this board. And it just is disheartening that the goalposts keep moving in terms of what the allegations are, what the problems are, and what was presented. I don't know why all this was not presented earlier numerous times the superintendent asked for. But this, none of this that was mentioned prior, uh, was mentioned in the original resolution. And I know personally, I have tried every way I know how to say, you know what? I understand you have concerns, some valid concerns. But it's really shocking to me that there is no sense of being conciliatory at all. Just being hell-bent, hell-bent on dismissing this superintendent. And it's just not right. The latitude that has been given in the past to previous superintendents on numerous occasions over the years. This just doesn't make sense, and that's why I know, I believe with everything in me, this is not just about policies and procedures. But to my colleagues, one vote, you still have your one vote. No one's vote is more important than each of our votes. Please focus on that one vote. Give the community a chance. Give the superintendent time. Thank you.
Ten point five, approve a resolution approving M S. Ten point five, approve a resolution approving M S C S board str, board member strategic school funding allocations. Please turn those in by the end of the week to Karen. Thank you. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.